Good evening, everyone. Join me in a word of prayer. Lord, we come to you this evening believing that you are going to bestow upon the leaders that you have appointed wisdom, and we pray your presence now, Lord. May your will be done and your kingdom come. In the name of Jesus, we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dean Uker.
Here.
Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leo Zubor.
Here.
Mayor Mike Ristoucha.
Present. Okay, public discussion. Anybody in the audience who would like to say something before we move on to our agenda, please come up to the mic, state your name. You do look familiar.
Mayor Ristoucha and councilmembers, my name is Tamara Spade. I am with the Ripon Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to let you know there will be a transition going on over at the chamber. I will be leaving the end of December, but I wanted to introduce the new CEO of the Ripon Chamber, which is Kelly Donahue, will be taking my place effective January 2nd. And this is Kelly.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Not today.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tamara.
Today is Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. My name is Mary Lynn Wheeler, Hyphen Reynolds. I'm in front of the Ripon City Council located in California. There is another Ripon in Wisconsin. I don't know if some of you are aware of that, so that's why I try to be much more specific. Initially, I had planned to address the city council about fraud, a continuation of the discussion I had at the previous city council meeting. Those of you who were in attendance, I addressed many topics, one of which happened to deal with the issue of fraud. But I'm not going to address that topic right now. What I'm going to address at this particular point is the inaccuracy or the inaccurate, incomplete, and false statements in the October 9th, 2018 published minutes. If you go down here, the published minutes, it says we have several, there's a total of four sentences, so I'm looking at each period as a sentence. So some of the, some of the issues are, again, incomplete, inaccurate, and some of them are frankly, are blatantly false. And some of them has misinformation or incomplete information, so I want to fill in the blanks. Sentence number one, Mary Lynn Wheeler Reynolds said she is the owner of Lot 15 purchased from builder Mark Wilber. That piece is in fact correct, but we need to include McRoy-Wilber communities. There could be another individual named Mark Wilber. So I want to be very clear about that. She came before council to state she purchased land. Again, I indicated specifically Lot 15, that needed to be included, for $5,000, that the house sits on it and it is in her name. Where it says "house sits," let's be clear, is that I provide this council with documentation. This is not allegations. This is not an assumption. I provide a hard copy proof that that particular, how that house was constructed. And the proof was the letter from PNC Mortgage Company generated by Kimberly Harrison. That's documented proof. And that proof, that particular document proved that that house was constructed, the house in question, 1221 Sapphire Court, was constructed by refinancing another property that I own in San Jose, California, 3419 Prince Albert Court. It was constructed using those funds, solely constructed using those funds. It was not constructed using McRoy-Wilber's construction loans. A hundred percent of construct, when you buy a tract home, it is utilized, they utilize a construction loan. It was not built utilizing a construction loan. It was utilized, it was built using my separate funds. I bought property when I was in my twenties. That constitutes separate property. I provided a lot of information at the last city council meeting, not at the preview, on the October 9th one, lots of documentation regarding separate property laws, because apparently Ripon Police Department is unaware of separate property laws in California. They have them for a reason. 1221 Sapphire Court is separate property. I should not have been arrested. And if Ripon Police is not aware of separate property laws, that's why you have a city, city manager. And I'm tired of being arrested, bogusly, fraudulently arrested by Ripon Police Department under the guise that that property is community. It is not community property, it is separate property. And I provided you legal information so you could further your knowledge about separate property laws. The land is separate property, my separate property, Mary Lynn Wheeler's Hyphen Reynolds' separate property. I bought that property from a separate checking account, I already told you that, Wells Fargo account, it is separate property. Get familiar with California's separate property laws. They're there for a reason. That land is separate property, the building, the residential building that I built, sold with my funds, separate property. Each and every time Ripon Police Officers have arrested me, it is a fraudulent, bogus arrest. I don't know what you told the judge to get emergency restraining order each and every time. Whatever you told the judge is bogus and fraudulent. That's for that first sentence.
Thank you. Okay, approval over the minutes of November 13th, 2018. We're going to do a voice.
The system doesn't work?
We're not at our computer.
Well, we're not on our own computers yet, so.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries. Now it's up to you, right?
Yes.
Okay.
At a sep, at a special meeting held on August 21st, 2018, Resolution Number 1877 was adopted to cancel the November 6th, 2018 election and appoint Dean Uker and Mike Ristoucha to the two open councilmember seats. Because there was no election, there is no resolution tonight accepting the certification of that election. Through the resolution, both Dean Uker and Mike Ristoucha have been appointed to a four year term and shall take office and serve exactly as if they were elected at that election. Because of that, I ask you both, Councilmember Ristoucha and Councilmember Uker, to join me in administering the oath of office.
Can you stand back here?
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter, and will do so in a manner which is at all times in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Ripon. I do further swear that during such time that I am a councilmember of the city of Ripon, I will not advocate nor become a member of any party or organization, political or otherwise, that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of the state of California by force or violence or other unlawful means. If you agree, say I do. Congratulations. Yes, and we'll continue with the council reorganization. So the council reorganization is dictated by Section 2.04.020 of the Ripon Municipal Code. It states that the designated mayor and vice mayor must be queried to accept or decline the position. Leo Zubor, do you wish to serve as mayor?
Sure.
Councilmember Jake Parks, do you wish to serve in the position of vice mayor?
Well, following that response, I accept.
So we do have your different seats, so if you guys could all reorganize. Councilmember Zubor.
Just a minute.
You will be here in seat number one.
Okay.
Seat two is for Vice Mayor Jake Parks. Seat three is for Councilmember Daniel DeGraff. Seat four is for Councilmember Dean Uker. And seat five is for...
Is this mine?
Yes.
Is this mine? So now we can adjourn? If you'd like. Is this mine? I don't know.
Oh, I don't need that, probably. Just steal my paper, Jake.
All right, everybody ready? Moving on. Approval of the agenda as posted. Do we have any items anyone wishes to pull from the consent calendar? None? Then I need a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So moved.
Second.
Now do we do our thing? I don't have anything. You? Nope.
Nope. No. You know, this is still gray.
No.
I mean, we can't call a vote. You can try.
There you go.
Now. All right. Okay. What?
He's quick to it.
Oh, I see, okay. All right, next item is the consent calendar. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
He can't call a vote again.
No, there we go. Item two, resolutions. Resolution to accept the financial and independent auditor's report. Is this you, Lisa?
That is me, Mr. Mayor. The audit for the city of Ripon for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018 has been completed by Price, Page &amp; Company. This audit is completed to fulfill requirements placed on us by state agencies and our bonding agencies. We use an independent third-party audit firm to ensure we are in compliance with the laws and regulations. They review many of our transactions, our internal controls, and other policies to form an opinion on the financial statements. The audit is a combination of all of our finances of the city. I've also provided a staff report in the city council packet that gives a financial synopsis of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018 in terms, charts, and reports that you're used to seeing to help link the financial information that you received during the year to the audited financial statement. Council action for this evening is to approve the resolution that accepts the city financial statements and independent auditor's report in the single audit as of June 30th, 2018, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, mine says somebody is waiting to speak.
That's me.
How do I find out who that is?
It's the Mike Speaker's.
Oh. Mr. Ristoucha.
Yeah, so the only question I have is, aren't these the same statements we saw last month?
That is correct.
Okay, so I move, do we accept?
Well, I have a question.
I still move, we accept.
You can do that, okay. Actually, I have two. One, on page 43, in the AB 1600 report that we're going to look at next, one of the items listed is an SSJID connection fee, but in the audit, it's not there. Is it new, or do we just miss it?
This note on page 43 is new this year, and that line was, is missing, but we have made a note to include it in next year's audit.
And then, the other one is just more for understanding, on page 46 and 50, that's the summary of those, I'm assuming they're highway fees, but all they are is numbers. Is that what they are?
Yes, those are highway user taxes, and I have made a note as well for next year to, to write that in there as well, so it'll say highway user, or HUTA, highway user tax, 2103 fund and then 2105 fund, but you'll be able to see that in there as well for next year, just to clarify.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? We have a motion from, who seconded it?
Everybody seconded it, right?
Okay. Motion carries. Item three, public hearing on the PFFP Capital Funds Annual Report. These are the fees that are assessed to new developments in order to cover costs of water, sewer, different things. If you've seen the report, you can see the classifications, and we are required by law to have a report every year as to where we stand with those funds. This is you again?
Yes, sir.
It's all yours.
This is a public, this is exactly what you just said, but I'll read my report anyways. It's a public hearing on our annual report of capital fees for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018 pursuant to California Government Code Section 66,000. The staff report provides information for the council regarding this AB 1600 report or PFFP report and the requirements under this government code section, along with how this report ties to the fund summary balances that you guys are used to seeing as of June 30th, 2018. The PFFP report has been prepared in accordance with the requirements of the code and, which they're all listed out in the staff report for you. Action from tonight, as noted in the staff report, is to approve the annual report of capital fees for the year ending June 30th, 2018, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is a public hearing.
First, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, come back to the council. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Ristoucha?
Yeah, I just have one question, sorry I didn't put it up there. So, as we saw with the mitigation fee went down because of the price of land, do these automatically go up every year, or do they track commodity prices?
They go up each year.
Just automatically?
Based off the consumer price index.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Sorry, construction, the E&amp;R Construction Cost Index is the right one, yes.
I wanted to point out one thing, because it's something that has bothered me for a few years about this. If you look at the amount of money in each of those funds, and there are, I don't know, eight or nine, half of them are negative. The ones that are positive total about $8.7 million. The ones that are negative total $7.3 million. So in actuality, there's only $1.4 million in that whole fund that's been collected from all these fees over all those years. And if you look at it that way, there are some funds that even if we wanted to do something with them, there's not enough money there to use the money that it says there is. One of them says that there's $3 million, I think it's Parks and Recreation or something. We only have $1.4 million, so if we wanted to do a $3 million park project, we'd have to borrow half the money from someplace other than these funds. That's a little bit concerning. Then I got to thinking about what it would take in order to get all these back up to zero. Now, all these funds come from a variety of sources, but most of it comes from, all of it comes from development, and most of it comes from new housing construction. So I sat down and I said, all right, if we look at this amount of money that each one owes, and we look at the fee that we're going to collect for every house that's built, how many houses would it take in order to get each one of these funds up to zero? There are some people in this town that would not like the number of houses we were going to have to build in order to get these up to zero. That's what this chart shows. The garbage fund is $800,000 in the hole. Using the fee that we collect, we would have to build 1,000 houses to get that up to zero. This fund has a life of about 21 more years. I think it runs to 2040, which is when our general plan runs. So if you take the 21 years left and divide it into 1,000 houses, that's 50 houses a year, just to get to zero on the garbage fund. Transportation's $200,000 in the hole. We collect a lot more for transportation, $6,000 per house. So at that rate, we'd need 30, 32 houses or one and a half a year, not a big deal. Parks and Rec, half a million dollars in the hole. We collect a ton of money for Parks and Recs, almost $15,000 a house. So again, it's about two houses a year. The library, $600,000 in the hole. We only collect $486,000 per house. So it would take 1,371 houses to pay off that debt to the library, or 65 houses a year for 20 years. The big one is this City Hall slash Police Fund, which was used to build this building. Right now, that fund is $5 million in the hole. This building cost $6 million to build, we paid off about a million dollars of it, so there's still $5 million to go. We collect about $1,700 per house to pay for this building. It would take 2,903 houses to pay off that loan, or 138 houses a year. That's what concerns me. I'm not saying that this building wasn't worth it, but this building is going to be an anchor around our ability to do some things in the areas of garbage, transportation, Parks and Rec, library, and four or five others for a long time. And it may have to be dealt with in some other way. It can't be ignored. You know, $5 million out of a $7.5 million debt is in this building, and it collects the lowest fees of all. So I get a little wired when this study comes out every year, and that's all I have to say, really.
My question is, is, under our guidelines now, how many houses could you build a year, roughly?
Two and a half percent of current.
Two and a half percent of what we have already.
120 something, 130?
So realistically, you're going to need to do over double.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to...
Our raised, our raised fees. Scary thought.
Yeah. Well, in that particular area, like I say, and some of the others were doing okay. And the rest of them are all positive, which is even better, but still.
Well, yeah, but the City Hall Police, that's, that's, you get rid of that, we're not looking back, right?
Well, Leo, and I think it's important to notice that you're maintaining, your projections are for the current maintaining of levels of, of city services and where things are at. That's not even taking into account the fact that as you grow, you as a city also have to expand your resources and capacity as well to operate.
Right.
So I think, I think that's an important, you know, thing that needs to be recognized too, with what you're talking about.
That's all. Any other questions or comments? Then we need a motion, correct?
Motion moved.
Second. 3B is the annual review of development agreements. These are the active ones, right?
Yes, yeah.
The 10 active ones are listed. Ken?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmembers. It's that time of year again, we do this once a year, the planning commission actually reviews them and makes a recommendation to city council, which is the staff report. It's in front of you this evening. This is a public hearing, so we will have to open it up to the public, but all the current development agreements that are on the list that are current, they are all in compliance with the conditions of their agreements, so the recommendation would be to accept the report from the planning commission.
Any questions for Mr. Zeiderbart?
Yeah, I have a question. So Ken, the question I had, when I was looking at this, I saw the developments that were not in compliance, but some I guess are just sold anyway, right? Because they, this one, like for an example, expired 8/15/2013. So if it expired, can you be non-compliance or even in compliance with something that's not even really there anymore?
Development agreements have several aspects to them. Obviously, they, they do lock in fees and such for, for housing, and so any new fees that would come about, they're not eligible, or they wouldn't have to pay those fees. But there is stuff that in development agreements that do run with the land, so if there's any special provisions in a development agreement regarding setbacks or, or such like that, those things do run in perpetuity, so that we do keep those on the books, and we do obviously refer to development agreements for setback requirements if people are adding on to their homes and such.
Okay. How about Frank Borges' property, 123118, it expires and it's not in compliance with, there's got to be something else besides that.
The Frank, the Borges piece?
Yeah.
No, that's the only one that hasn't started any construction, so they are out of compliance and it was terminated.
Because they haven't started construction, right? Okay.
They do have a timeframe to start, once they do a development agreement, and they didn't, they didn't perform.
Thanks.
Any other questions? It is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience have a question, comment? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, come back to the council. Does this take, you want a, a motion to approve this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'll move, we accept the great work that the planning commission has done.
No. No, you didn't. Mike did, he beat you.
Yeah, Dean seconded it.
You seconded it.
Yep. You missed it.
Yep.
You want to have it, you can move it.
No, it's too late, it's gone.
I'm just...
Close.
All right, moving on. Ordinances. Item 4A, second reading and adoption of the ordinance relating to mobile vendors. Mr. Zeiderbart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will tackle this one. As you recall, at the last meeting, we had the first reading and introduction. There were some recommendations by city council that were incorporated into the ordinance, and they are listed. There was an attachment with red line version of that that we included with the staff report, so at this point, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
How come I can't see it?
You gotta, you gotta go down to ordinances, you gotta open up.
Do what?
Click on the Agenda 10.
I did.
Click the arrow, click the arrow on the left. And then go to that right there.
Oh. You really screwed this up.
You got the speakers.
I still got...
Click up on the top on the Agenda 10, to the right.
There you go, all right. Anybody have any questions about this? They did incorporate the changes that we talked about.
It did. And I think they're accurate based on...
It does read better.
Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions about the ordinance? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Is that okay, Dean?
No.
Oh, Dan got it.
I'm going slow, so you guys don't get so upset. I know you guys have feelings.
Now, at this point, since it's been adopted, it goes into effect in 30 days, right? Okay, so it won't come back again?
Right.
Okay.
Well, it may.
It might.
It's not supposed to.
They blocked Main Street off.
Oh.
Item 4B, first reading and introduction of an ordinance dealing with traffic control devices in the Ripon Municipal Code. Mr. Zeiderbart, who's doing that one?
I can handle this.
Oh, okay.
So the last meeting, the police chief talked a little bit about the stop sign that was getting installed on Miljo Avenue. I think through some of the discussion, both staff and the city council realized there were some shortcomings in our current ordinance. Just to back up, the process we typically go through as we get these requests from the public that we get from time to time, staff goes through and they do a traffic study and also look at the record of accidents at an intersection and apply that to the warrants. These are, the warrants come from the different state regulations that tell you whether a stop sign is warranted or not at, at that particular intersection. We have a working group of staff, it includes someone from the engineering department, someone from the police department, and public works department. They meet, they review... They meet, they review that data, they, uh, review the warrants, uh, and if they determine that a stop sign is warranted at an intersection, uh, they move forward with that, like you just saw on Milljo Avenue. It gets, uh, made public to the City Council, to the public, uh, and then they do a lot of advertisement to make sure everyone aware, is aware that it's happening. Uh, so that's the process we go through, like I, I mentioned earlier, when I started this, um, staff report. Uh, we did realize some of the shortcomings, uh, with our own ordinance. Uh, we went through and we looked at a number of different cities, probably over twenty cities in California. Every city very much has this antiquated language that was first probably written in, in the late sixties. Uh, it does apply to the vehicle code, and so some of the definitions that we use are directly, uh, uh, related to, to the vehicle code. Uh, one of the, probably the biggest policy discussions, and where we differed than all the other cities is, um, our ordinance gave, um, the authority to the police chief, but also with, um, direction from the City Council. That was really some of the, uh, confusion that staff had, and I think was different than other ordinances. So I, I think there's, uh, looking at other cities, uh, a- and after us discussing it, what we'd recommend is that the council consider just giving that authority to the police chief as long as he goes through and the warrants are made that the stop signs, uh, be installed based off those warrants. With that, I'll stop and, um, uh, open up for any questions, or Tom, if there's anything you wanna add to that.
We are, yes, we are recommending though that we hold this over until the next meeting. The, the, Kevin referred to it antiquated. It's almost as old as I am, so that'll tell you something, right? As old as the council members do, should.
That's topic.
Yeah. And it is, we're still written, as Kevin said, referring to other city ordinances, they're all written in the, about the same timeframe, but they're not the model of clarity, and I'd like to go through this and clear net, clean it up a little bit. I think it accomplishes the basic objective, but I think we can do it much better and much more clearly, so for that reason, I just would, you know, we can take comment, but I think we should hold over on the first reading and the introduction.
Aren't the stop signs up?
It'll apply for the fu- for future instances, right?
I think it needs to be clarified, because the current one, and even the one that was sent out sort of, I guess by mistake, cause the two in the, in the, that we got don't match.
Right.
They're confusing. I mean, at one point, it says the police chief's gonna do it, someplace else it says that the council will, another one says that they might, and in my opinion, if we're gonna have a process, the ordinance ought to reflect the process.
Right, and I, and I don't think it does at this point. I don't think it does accurately enough, and I think we can make it much simpler. Uh, I don't think we have to go through nearly as many iterations as they did in the previous ordinance in nineteen sixty-nine. We'll, we'll hopefully make new mistakes, not old ones.
All right, so if there are no objections, we'll hold it over. Bring it back once it's redone, okay? Uh, discussion items, five A, Diamond Pet Food Expansion Project Update and Scoping Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you recall, a little bit of background on this project, in November of two thousand seventeen, the City of Ripon did receive an application from Diamond Pet Foods, um, desiring to add a fourth production line to their facility, um, as well as updating their odor abatement system to alleviate, uh, concerns and complaints received regarding pet food odor, uh, in our community. Uh, since that application, the City of Ripon has entered into a reimbursement agreement with, uh, Diamond Pet, Pet Food to cover costs associated with the processing of this application. Uh, and essentially, the project has been split into two parts or phases. Uh, phase one consists of the installation of new odor abatement equipment. Uh, the approvals required for this installation, uh, consisted of an over-the-counter permit by the City of Ripon and a discretionary approval from the, uh, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Um, at this time, the installation of this new equipment is currently under construction, I believe, um, is finishing up, or has already started. Uh, they can answer, uh, speak of that a little bit when they get up to talk about the project. And, uh, the objective of that is to have the odor, new odor abatement equipment installed, operating, and, and show proven effectiveness, um, on allevi- on alleviating the pet food odors prior to moving and proceeding to phase two, which is the, um, installation of a new fourth production line within their existing facilities. Uh, approvals required for this installation of the fourth line, production line is a discretionary approval, which would come from the City of Ripon. For the processing of this application, an environmental impact report is being prepared to identify and mitigate any po- potential significant, uh, environmental effects of the proposed project. City staff anticipates final discretionary consideration for the second phase, which would be the installation of the fourth line, uh, by the City Council to take place in, uh, mid two thousand nineteen. Diamond Pet Food is here tonight, they're gonna provide an update on the proposed expansion project and, and where they stand with the installation of the odor abatement equipment. Uh, and the City of Ripon's environmental consultant is also here tonight, uh, they'll conduct a, what is called a public scoping meeting, uh, to obtain comments from the public, from public agencies and, and the, uh, and other interested parties uh, regarding issues to be analyzed in the, um, project environmental impact report. So there is some, uh, comment cards at, at the back of the room, if anybody's interested in filling out, uh, comments regarding this project, or we could take verbal comments at, at a certain time here when they're done with their, um, with their PowerPoint presentation for you this evening. So at this time, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and you can, I think they're queued up to go.
Is this, you are...
I'm Mike Parker, a senior environmental planner with the Sun Environmental, and I'm ready...
This is our environmental consultant that's ready to kick off, yeah.
We are under contract with the city to prepare the environmental impact report. So Ken did actually most of my job for me as far as intros, but I might just go a little bit into, um, what the purpose of this meeting is. Um, so here's a little outline of the presentation. I think the purpose of the meeting is mostly twofold. The first is to give, um, council and the public an update about the project and, um, answer questions that they might have. Um, the second, and the reason I'm here, is to conduct a public scoping meeting, and that would be to collect public comments regarding the scope of the impacts that will be evaluated in the environmental impact report. Um, as Ken mentioned, there is a signup sheet and comment cards in the back. Um, if, um, members of the public would like to stay informed and kept abreast of the environmental review process, please fill out your name and information in the back, and we will send you notices. And so with that, um, my intro's a little bit short, cause Ken did most of the work for me. I'm gonna hand it off, uh, to Randy Fraser with York Engineering to talk more about the project itself. And I will talk more about the SEQUA and the NOP in the scoping meeting in a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, my name is Randy Fraser. I work with York Engineering, and, uh, since two thousand twelve, I've had the privilege, the opportunity to work, um, for Diamond Pet Foods to help them with principally with this odor problem, and it's been a very frustrating experience to be, um, to be quite honest about that. But I think we have some very, very good news for you tonight, for, for the members of the public tonight, believe it or not. What I'd like to do is just kinda go through just a couple of slides here, review just where we've come from, um, what's been done in the last, what, six years, I guess, or so? And, um, and we'll talk a little bit about that new, um, odor abatement system that, that was mentioned. So, next slide, please. Can I have a pointer?
Next.
Okay. Is this... Okay. All right, so first of all, um, yeah, again, twenty, twenty-ten, Diamond acquired the property. Twenty-ten to twenty-twelve, they obtained the permits. Twenty-twelve, they started operation. Very quickly found out there was an issue with, with odors from the pet food production. Their permit at that time was for three production lines, although they had room and left room in the facility for a fourth line. And that's what this, this, this whole project is about at this point, is to, to install that fourth line. It's, it's needed to, um, adequately provide the production and to meet the demand for pet food. We started working on, um, looking at what ways to control the odors immediately. In two thousand thirteen, we pro- provided a draft report and, um, looked at all the different, um, you know, types of control methods. And based on that, it looked like the best one, the most attractive one, the one with the, with the least environmentally negative con- uh, con- uh, conflict, would be the use of this cold plasma injection. And you remember, I stood before this council at, at that time, and we said that's what we wanted to do. And, and we had faith it was gonna be, uh, successful. There was some evidence from Europe and from Canada that it would be. As it's turned out, over the course of the last four or five years, it had, has not performed to the level we thought it would. It has helped a lot, um, but it just has not been adequate. And, and we, um, we wish, we wish it, it'd done better, but we have a, a solution that's gonna be a lot better, um, than that now. But in twenty, worked on that problem from two thousand twelve to two thousand seventeen. And, uh, two thousand sixteen, Diamond determined the fourth line was needed, so that's where we're at, at right now with, with this project. This one right here? Okay. Okay. Just to show you what the facility looks like inside, this is, um, the, what's, what's called the steam conditioning extrusion room. It's hard to see, cause we're kind of bright in this, in this room here, but there are three of these identical units, and there's room for a fourth. We have a similar situation in the dryer, uh, room. Three identical dryers. That entire structure is a dryer, dries the pet food. Pet food comes off that steam line, um, in a very wet kibble form, is transported to this dryer. It's spread across a moving belt that rolls down the length of this thing, dries the pet food, sends it to the next part of the process. So, but you can see a very large part of this room, um, had space for a fourth production line, so gives you an idea of what that, uh, what that space is for. On the odor abatement, um, I know that there's great interest. I, to be honest, I really hope there'd be more discussion about the traffic, the stop signs and things like that, um, tonight. But I know there's a lot of interest in the odor issues here in, here in town, and we've been very sensitive. We've been following every one of them with the San Joaquin Valley Air District. We've been trying to respond to them personally, and talk to people about them, to understand what we're doing. And I know it seems like, sometimes it seems like nothing's being done, but I'll tell you, there's a lot that's been done. I mentioned we, you know, did the study in two thousand thirteen. Twenty fourteen, the system, the cold plasma system was installed. There were problems getting the system to run reliably. And a lot of work went into finding out the reason for that. The manufacturer didn't know the reason. Turns out that Diamond themselves found the reasons, um, for, for that, uh, unreliability. It, but it took a couple of years to do it. Once it was done, it was still pretty clear that it wasn't gonna be adequate to, to abate the odors. Again, it did help, but it just was not enough. It just wasn't enough, and especially, you know, here in this area, there's a real problem with weather. That's, that's a major, major factor during the fall, winter, and spring. Summertime is great, there's a lot of good mixing, it's not an issue, you know, but wintertime is, is real tough. But as soon as it was learned that it wasn't going to be adequate, um, Diamond immediately, um, looked, picked up the report again from, from two thousand thirteen, and looked at what other options were available. And the one that was chosen is, is a technology called regenerative te- uh, thermal oxidation, RTO. This is like the Ferrari of odor abatement, okay, if you excuse the, the metaphor. It's the best you can do. You can't, you just can't do better. It's used in so many industries that have odor problems. It's used in pet food production, I think there's four, uh, the, the company that, that Diamond, uh, employed, Durr Systems. They have four, four of these operations here in this country, but they also control, basically what they do is they control odors, odors and, um, pollution from high-volume, low-concentration streams. And it's very, very difficult to do that. You just imagine a huge volume with a very, very small amount of pollutant. That's what this does, that's what RTO does. It's very hard for other technologies to do it, and it's very expensive, too. This is a, um, photograph, I hope you can see this, of, um, RTOs being installed at the plant this, this past fall. They were ordered, um, in, early in the spring. We got a permit form, Diamond got a permit for those from the air district, um, I think it was in March. They immediately ordered the RTOs from, from Durr Systems. A very well-known, very respected company. Yeah, I'd love, I'd love to tell you more about the technology. If you wanna know more about the technology, I'll tell you all about it. It's really cool, it's very few moving parts, and it's just very, very effective, and, um, and it's exciting. But you can see there are three RTOs, we've listed their RTO one, two, and three, and they're in various states of being constructed here. You can see the top of the building, you can see down in the distance, a few of the stacks. Those stacks are gonna go away, and they're gonna go away very, very quickly, as it turns out. Here are the RTOs, as they stand just maybe a couple of weeks ago. RTO number two has an opening there. Don't worry, that opening is closed now, cause they're all bolted shut, okay? But this is what a regenerative thermal oxidizer looks like. Basically what it's doing is it's taking all the stinky, stinky air from the process. It's running it into, um, it's running through a, a, a preheated section of, um, refractory material that's very hot. It, it heats up that exhaust air, then it goes into a combustion chamber at the top. At, at that point, it's burned at about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred degrees. And then it goes back out and, um, and it's exhausted out those little, those little square or rectangular stacks right here. These little things right here. So that's basically, and it's, and it's, it's just combustion at that point. There's no, um, no pollutant or no odor-causing material, um, anymore. Another view of the RTOs from the other side. These are the, um, the lines that come in. This is the main header from the plant, coming in, RTO three, two, and one. And then again, that's the, that's the line taking the, um, the combustion products, um, out of the RTO itself. Um, this is very difficult to see, um, but I wanted to just show you how line four just fits into this project. Basically, you can see there are, there are three lines. Here's line number one, okay, production line number one. Number two, three, and then line number four, it's gonna be right here. Everything's gonna be, all of this is gonna be inside the building. Very little done outside the building. They installed the RTOs, um, on an area that was paved, so it was already existing on the south side of the building. And, uh, but that, that, that part of it is already, that's done. And again, if you wanna talk more about this process, I'd be happy to, to, to explain more of it, but the front end of the plant, nothing, there are no changes there. The existing transportation, transporting of, uh, raw materials to the plant, the train tracks, you know, but not, that's, that's, that's staying exactly the way it's been. No change in the packaging, uh, and the storage operations. It's just one more, one more line. The approximate capacity of the lines total, um, as they are right now, three, is seven hundred and eighty tons a year. They're going to one thousand forty, so it's gonna increase by two hundred and sixty, which is exactly the same as the rest of the, of each of these lines. Two hundred and sixty tons per day is what they're permitted to do. Um, I, I'm not sure what they actually do, but that's basically just a ratioing of one more line. There's no more, no more than that. So, um, I think I just explained it, you know, a little bit about, you know, the, the capacity, the re- the need for the capacity. This is all about, this is all demand-driven. Diamond makes over a hundred different, um, pet food products. Diamond makes over 100 different pet food products. Everything from Natural Balance, you know, the Dick Van Patten dog food, to Taste of the Wild, super-high protein, and I mean, 100 formulas, and they can turn these around very, very quickly. They can change formulas very, very quickly. Plant's really an exciting place to be. It's a state-of-the-art facility. But they're going from 780 tons a day to 1,040, and it's all demand-driven. I mentioned the equipment to be installed. It's just the same as the rest of what's already there, steam conditioner, natural gas fire dryer, dryer cooler, and vertical cooler, and just some ancillary equipment. Now, once the city approves the EIR for this project, the district will issue a permit. That's the only thing that they're waiting for. They have everything else to do, the permit to provide the authority to construct, but they need that. Once Diamond has the permit, then they will place the order with the same company that built the rest of the system. It's a company out of Kansas, and they'll build that equipment, they'll ship it, and Diamond will install it in about three or four months. Extremely efficient in installing things. So, a couple, you know, three months, three, four months, and so beginning in either late 2019 or early 2020 would be the start of that fourth line, best case probably. That's what we're looking at. Okay, so I'm going to let... I'm going to let this go back to Mike, I think. But I want to just make one point clear. I didn't make any of my slide here. And that is, what's really exciting about this is that, okay, it was mentioned that the RTOs are in, you saw the pictures of them. Those are our, those are Diamond's RTOs. Those are not taken from someplace else. Those are Diamond's. They're in the commissioning process. They've been commissioning the last week and a half, you know, checking out all the connections, working on the logic, the operating logic, testing this and that, you know, running them for short times. Tomorrow, they start hooking them up, all right? Line number one is the first one, production line number one. They got, there'll be trains out there first thing in the morning, they're going to pull off the stacks, line number one. They're going to hook it up to the RTOs. Thursday, they're going to do line number two. Friday, line number three. By the weekend, they're going to be running with this RTO system, and the cold plasma will be turned off. Cold plasma will be turned off, and also the... there's an odor injection that's also part of this previous. That's all gone. So by the weekend, you know, you're going to, it's going to be all, and I think you're going to notice the difference immediately. And I do have a, you know, I have a lot of materials about the effectiveness of RTO, okay? As I said, it's the best you can do. But there was an experience that, down in Victorville, the Nutro plant down there had a problem where they were getting, they were getting hundreds of complaints a day from a pet food plant that basically, they're just too close to the people, you know, and they installed RTO, and it completely cleared up the problem. I've spoken to both their legal counsel and their head of engineering, and, you know, gotten the full story on that whole thing. But this is an article from the paper, and I'm going to put it back in one of these chairs. You can grab one if you're interested in doing that. So that concludes my presentation.
Do you have a couple of questions?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So, I'm going to use your metaphor. So, did you go to the Honda, the BMW, Mercedes, now you're going to the Ferrari? Was there some reason why you didn't go to the Ferrari to begin with?
Yes, yes, there was. The drawback to RTO is that it uses a lot of natural gas. You've got to run natural gas in it to, you're burning, is what you're doing. And you're making greenhouse gas, so there's the greenhouse gas issue. Rest of it is just normal, typical combustion, you know, products. But that was really the thing. It was thought, you know, based on the experience in Canada, the experience in Europe, and where people are living close in to some pet food operations, that this would be successful. We did some modeling, some, you know, some dispersion modeling, and it looked like what we were, you know, what we were proposing was going to be enough. It turns out, we were able to get, we were able to actually get about 60% odor reduction, okay? But the problem is, the human nose is very, very, you know, very, very sensitive. And, you know, you just, I mean, there's no machine made that's as sensitive as, you know, as we are.
Well, and that was going to be my second question. You just said the weather here is different than other places that you build these things, so you could have a machine that could test it and say there's no smell at all, but people are still walking around smelling it. That's still a potential, right?
You really can't, there is no machine that I know of that can actually detect.
Except for us.
Yeah.
So, since we do have different weather and different location, different dynamics and all that, we're going to have to go out there and test it ourselves to see if we can smell it.
Well, the, I mean, the ultimate, you know, you're correct. The ultimate test is, how does it do? How does it go? It's not just this theoretical thing, it's really...
Exactly.
I mean, because we talk about this, we look at the numbers, and believe me, we're not indifferent to the fact that it's just, it's not something that you want to live with day in, day out. I mean, there's a lot of benefit to certainly to the making something. It's wonderful to make something, make a product, to make such a great product. We all love our pets, but it's just that one thing that's difficult to...
So I guess my follow-up question or comment would be, is that if it doesn't work, why would we approve a fourth line?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, there, I really wouldn't be able to speak to that. I don't...
Okay, all right.
But I, let me just, let me just say this. I just can't imagine it not working. I can't imagine this one not working.
Be nice.
It's used in, it's used in every industry. I mean, they used it at the New E, it's at the New E, it's now the Tesla facility, you know, where they're basically, you know, painting the cars. They've got a real high-volume, low-concentration of paint. They use RTO there. They use RTOs at rendering facilities, you know? That's one of the smelliest things, and they're very successful there. Every place that, I have never heard of a place where an RTO is where it has been very unsuccessful. Let me say that.
Let me ask another one, if I can. So, if this creates greenhouse gases, is there going to be some legislation that's going to shut this thing down?
No, you just deal with the issue of the greenhouse gases. We, and part of that is, you're, right now, Diamond is in, and most plants are in a position where all they have to do is report. If you go over a certain number of tonnage a year, it's about 25,000 metric tons a year, then you have to, then you come into what's called the cap and trade program, and there are additional requirements to that. So, it's possible that may be, you know, where we find ourselves. Hopefully not, but, you know, I'm going to keep there.
I have one question. You have three RTO units there now with three lines.
Yes.
Will there be a fourth, or do those three will handle?
Will handle it. It will handle it. Great question. It's, and that's, it's really part of, that really goes to the issue of how you design the system. You have to design it so it is a system because of the fact that the lines are operating individually, up and down, and up and down. If you just have, each one had its own RTO, it'd be a problem. It's easier to run a RTO system, you know, and have everything just, you know, headed into that system, and then operate that than it is to have individual units.
Thank you.
I just have one question. So, let's assume that this works, and we go through and add a fourth line. Does that change Ripon's, you know, Diamond Pet Foods, does that change the way that they look at Ripon as a place for future growth and expansion, or is four lines, four lines, and that's it, and that's all we're ever going to get?
It's, as far as I, I mean, I am not part, that's definitely above my pay grade, okay? Let me say that. But I mean, right now, this, the RTO system, the three RTOs, is designed for four. It can handle, it can handle one line, two lines down, two with two lines down, three, one lined out, four. So there you go. Can't go more than four.
Yeah, yeah, so we very well may be capped, okay, without going through and doing additional...
I mean, it would be very, very expensive because you have to change all the, I mean, you're talking all the headers, and I mean, there's just a lot, a lot involved.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, Randy, can everyone hear me okay? Thanks, Randy. Those are great questions also. So, just to continue with the second part of this meeting, which is the public scoping meeting, I'm going to talk a little bit about CEQA, everyone's favorite subject. I also wanted to emphasize, I'll go back. I also want to emphasize this fourth production line slide. There's been a lot of conversation about the RTO. They are installing those now. The discretionary action that will be before the city council will be to approve the fourth line. The RTO will be installed by then. So our environmental impact report is going to focus on the fourth line, not the RTO, except as much as the fourth line will be using the RTO. So, there would be generally more GHGs and such associated with that fourth line than there would be without the RTO, if that makes sense. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about CEQA. The California Environmental Quality Act, actually signed into law by Ronald Reagan when he was governor back in 1970. What CEQA does is it requires lead agencies of a project considering a discretionary action, and in this case, this is what the city is looking at with this project, to disclose the potential environmental impact of that project to the public, and require that all impacts be mitigated to the extent feasible. We have, the city has released a notice of preparation for this project. The notice of preparation is essentially the city announcing that it will be preparing an environmental impact report for this. An environmental impact report is the larger of the various different types of CEQA documentations that the city can make, so it's the most comprehensive. The notice of preparation was prepared with an initial study attached, and what the initial study did was it looked at all the various environmental issue areas, from aesthetics all the way to utilities, they're listed alphabetically, I won't go through them all. And I have a couple of copies of those, of that, if you want to see, but it's also posted on the city's website, the notice of preparation with initial study attached. And the initial study, after we went through the whole thing, we found these four environmental issue areas were the ones that could potentially result in an environmental impact, in a significant environmental impact, and would, and would require, and may require mitigation after we look at it further. And so those are air quality, and air quality includes odors, greenhouse gas emissions and climate change, as well as energy and transportation and traffic. The NOP, the NOP review period is going on right now. We released the notice of preparation on November 14th. It's a 30-day public review period. It ends next Tuesday on the 18th. So if you want to prepare written comments, again, those cards are in the back. You can fill those out and send them. There's, I believe, Ken's email address is on those. You can email him comments. Just please make sure to get those in by, I believe it's 5:00 PM on December 18th. So what this scoping meeting is, and this NOP comment period is for, is to consult the public on what they think the scope of the environmental impact report should be. That means, what different environmental impacts does the public see that this project could result in? Maybe tell us something that we may have missed, something, you know, that's very particular to the certain area of the community that maybe has been overlooked in our notice of preparation. So those are the kinds of things we're looking at. The comments that we're hoping to get will be focused on the potential impacts of the environment, not on the merits of the project. The city council will have opportunities to hear about, you know, your thoughts on whether you like the product or not. But purpose, and what I'm looking for, and what the city's looking for in its environmental impact report, are those potential impacts on the environment. Today, we're at the scoping meeting, it's November 11th. The draft EIR, the EIR is going to be a pretty thick document, it usually is. It will go out for a 45-day public review period. We anticipate that sometime in the winter or spring. During that 45-day review period, there would be a public hearing on the draft EIR like this, to gather verbal comments on, the public may have on the draft environmental impact report. A final environmental impact report is unprepared, which responds to the public's comments on that, draft environmental impact report. And that whole draft and final is submitted to the council for their public hearing, for their considerations on the environmental impact report and mitigation measures included. And as Randy mentioned, it would be summer 2019 is our current expectation. A little bit more detail on the comments we're looking at. Again, the scope of the environmental analysis, what types of impacts there could be. Also, CEQA requires in an EIR that a range of alternatives be evaluated, so the purpose of an alternative is to minimize or avoid a significant impact on the environment. So, we're looking for your ideas also of any potential alternatives that you think might be able to avoid or minimize those impacts. And we've talked about GHG here, that might be one, that, you know, you can think about different ways to reduce that. Also, mitigation measures, they would be measures that the city would require a project to implement that would reduce the impact. It differs from an alternative. An alternative is a different version of the project, and mitigation measure is an action that the project would implement. And there is Ken's information. If you'd like to submit a comment letter to him, again, comment letters are in the back. It has his email address on it, and there's the due date. And I'll hand it back over to Ken for the rest, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, Mr. Mayor, if you want to open up the microphone to anybody that might have a comment they would want to make on the scope of the EIR, we could definitely take some verbal comments at this time. If not, just would suggest people can fill out comment cards and get those to us by December 18th, by 5:00 o'clock.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment or provide input at this point?
I'd just like to state that Ken's phone number is wrong. He must not have wanted any phone calls. It's 599-2108, just in case.
Not impressed, man.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor of the council, my name is Gary Barton, 230 Laurel and Lane. Appreciate the effort on behalf of the council, the staff, and Diamond Pet Foods to address this issue. I, from what I understand, Diamond is a very good employer, the kind of company that I think we'd want in Ripon. But this is an issue that, in my experience, has not gotten better, it's gotten worse. One of the council members lives a couple of doors away. The fire chief lives a couple of doors away. We are, by the way, northeast of your facility, maybe, I don't know, probably not quite half a mile as a crow flies. And certainly this time of year, it's an issue. By the way, I'm not a complainer about this kind of thing. If it was a periodic odor, I wouldn't be particularly concerned. My brothers and I own a Beretta food processing facility, so we have some familiarity with some of the issues you face. But as I said, it's not gotten better. And the reason I wanted to come tonight after speaking with Mr. Seiderbart is that it is something that needs to be fixed. But in this community, we tend to think Rippen is a pretty special place and this is now a quality of life issue and it's one that needs to be fixed. Again, we appreciate Diamond Foods as an employer, as a member of our community, but it's got, it's got to get resolved. And so I guess the one question I have for Mr. Zeiderbart or perhaps the council is the proposed fourth line, I presume, or hope, will not be approved until members of the community, staff, council are satisfied that indeed the RTOs are working as advertised and there is no longer an odor issue in the community. Is that an appropriate assumption? Those are my comments and questions.
I think it's safe to assume that there's going to be time to find out if that's true or not because the timeline that's been presented here tonight, to me, indicates that system is going to be operating three or four months before that issue even comes back to us for an initial consideration, plus the final decision. So if there's still a problem, it'll have to be dealt with.
Yeah, okay. And this is the time of year when it's, it's most pronounced, although it was mentioned that there is no issue in the summer and it's certainly less significant. I remember smelling it in the summer too, so yeah, I hope we get a sufficient and in my, I guess I'd describe it as a reasonably lengthy trial to make sure that this, the odor issue is, thank you.
Katie Patterson, 216 Gracie Lane. I want to say ditto, that's a very hard act to follow because I feel like Mr. Barton captured a lot of my thoughts. And the reason why I even came out this evening, first off, I feel a little empowered to be involved in the city of Rippen politics now because I no longer hold a role with the County of Samuel Keane and, but I am familiar with the ag issues in our community and I'm not a, not in my backyard kind of person. I guess my exposure to this has been since I was in my pregnancies with my kids and going running down the trail and going, oh, oh my gosh, I gave it away to my girlfriends before I even announced it because I cannot tolerate the smell of the dog food. My dog is your guys' biggest fan and I think that's a wonderful thing. So I just want to make sure that, you know, from the rumbling and the way that I tracked the issue, you know, from afar, is that, you know, we were supposed to be making progress towards, you know, having the nuisance issue mitigated. And I thought that was something that was well underway with the air district and I would have to agree that it's either been at status quo or has actually gotten a little bit worse. It's not hurting me, it's not hurting anybody, but it is definitely kind of a, more of that nuisance piece, that quality of life. I think, you know, Rippen can do better. I think there's technology out there, as clearly has been indicated. I'm hopeful that it will work because I think that having, you know, companies like this that I have two also heard is a great employer is important for the city of Rippen to balance out its needs for jobs, community, you know, environment and all of these other things. Greenhouse gases are going to be a really critical piece for cities to manage going into the future. So, you know, to whatever extent possible that the city can be working, you know, with the businesses here, I think it's going to be really important. My husband teaches at the high school downtown. My daughter attends school downtown and many a days, that's all you smell when you're downtown. So I think, you know, when we go outside, we should smell the fresh air of fall and the seasonality of the green grass and all these other pieces. So, you know, however the city can work and as a constituent, however I can help to support businesses here, that's what I'd like to do. I understand CEQA and processes and public planning, so to whatever extent I can share with my community members, you know, the progress that's being made, I will, you know, commit to doing that on my end. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ray Jackson. I live at 1166 Treville Way. And the RTO system, I believe, is used in sewers, which is good, but the only question I would have or concern I would have is there going to be additional noise from the system? That's all I have. I did hear some buzzing over there last night for a loss, which is typical, I would assume, but I just want to make sure that there's additional noise.
Any other questions, comments, input? So we can close the public hearing? Do you have anything else you want to say?
No, this is, this is just a discussion, no action tonight. We were just opening it up so we can get some comments for the public scoping period, so just wrap it up.
And then there will be, there will be notices about when the draft EIR is available and our hearings are going to be.
Yeah, there will be public notices if you would like to notify. There is a sign and sheet in the back, you'll get personally notified of the next steps with the public hearings, with the environmental impact report and the project approvals as well.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Moving on, 5B, the policy for banners in city right of way. Who's this?
This one, Mr. Mayor. Staff was asked to draft a policy for the city council's consideration related to installing banners in the public right of way. We had done that and brought that forward at the November meeting for the, for discussion with the council. Received a number of comments. In the staff report here, I do have the policy that's been revised and I show the changes that we made trying to address the city council's comments, contract changes. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any? Mr. Restush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. So Kevin, I mean, I read the whole thing and, you know, spelled out kind of what we all talked about, but the question I have is, under definition permissible use of banners, says banners shall not be used by other activities such as fundraising. Get all of it except for promoting events. Well, I know, I think the almond blossom puts up a banner, I know that first responders puts up a banner and I kind of think those are promoting the event.
These were intended to be the banners on all the different, on the streetlight poles.
Okay, so that program not necessarily, okay.
Exactly. We have this, another section in here where we're talking about the banner across Central Street.
This is if somebody comes in and says, okay, I got it and I'm fine. Wholeheartedly agree. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have one. In Lathrop, they're doing this. If you go over one of those bridges, Lathrop Road, they're out there. Somehow, some way, the organizations need to know, A, limit how much they put on there and B, make it noticeable. Because when you drive over that, over past Lathrop, if you're trying to see what's on the banners, you're going to kill yourself because they're so, the writing is so small. They don't have pictures, all they have is names. And by the time you figure out who this one is for, there's two banners down and if somebody's coming the other way, there's a problem. So readability and noticeability is going to have to be built into this too because it's a, it's a good idea, but, and, well, not, is, well, right now it's not a good idea, but I guess it might be someday, but I'd hate to have somebody get hurt because this is a distraction. So do we need, this is, this is a, is this an ordinance?
No, this is a, this is a policy for council room.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion. Okay, we'll see what happens. 5C is council committees and task forces. This is the time of year when all of the committee assignments for council members comes up for consideration. You all should have this. So what I need you to do is.
Get it out and get it back to me.
Well, yeah.
This is Raymond, who'll get them to me.
Yeah, by the 14th, then I'll take a look at them and if I have any questions, I'll give you a call and then hopefully at the January meeting, the annual list will be up and for consideration. That's it. Reports. Lieutenant Sauer, do you have anything for the PD?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report.
I would tell all you high school kids, he used to be one of you. So be careful because someday you may be sitting in a chair like that and you don't want people digging into your past. I have a story about him to go over sometime, but we'll let it go. We'll let it go. Just one. And it's a doozy. Mr. Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to report on water use for November, I mean, 19% of the 2013 baseline, the reduction of 19%, bringing our, bringing our month running average to 22.23. This last month, we issued 404 notices for watering on the wrong day. That was November 1st, was the switch over between three days to one day a week. So we took advantage of going out and making sure, getting the notifications out to the folks who are still watering on the wrong days. That's all.
And we have new signs going into recycling, is that our procedure, I hear?
Yes, and the signs came in yesterday and we're looking at putting them in this week.
Right, right. Mr. Stevens. Mr. Zeiderbart. Mr. Peace.
Yeah, just real quick, just to give, one of the council members an updated proof project list. There was nothing significant that changed, but I'm going to answer any questions that you may have on any of those projects.
So we ordered the contract for the River Road.
Tonight, correct.
When do they plan on starting?
We've got to go through the supplemental process or initial meeting with them. I'm hoping toward the end of January, but it may, it may pin, it may be February it may pin.
Okay, thank you. Christmas. Mr. Restush. Mr. Uker.
Everybody, Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. It'll be after that and Happy New Year. Drive safe. Or you might be seeing.
Especially at Mill Joe and what is it? Casey, yeah.
I know, I must be saying too. Bigger signs here, put new stuff, signs here.
Mr. DeGraff.
Yeah, so for you that haven't been to a council meeting before, they always make fun of me because half the time there's nobody here and I say thank you to the members of the public who are, came to provide comment or just sit and listen. I appreciate you being here. For those of you who commented on the issues tonight, I always appreciate the public's input and the presentation and want to say thank you as well. So that's it. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
What's that down there? Nothing.
Really?
Nothing.
I'm impressed. I have two. One, I appreciate the work that was done on the entry to City Hall. Looks nice. Looks nice. Most of you didn't even notice it yet. Been talking about it for months, but it got done. And, I think I've talked to everybody about Friday night, so Mr. Uker and Mr. Parks and myself will be representing the city in the Christmas parade, hopefully it'll all show up. Last I heard, there were 35 entries, so you're going to be there for a while this time. But it's going to be bright and shiny too. And with that, we will adjourn the council meeting.
Your agenda for the year is in.
Yeah, yeah.
I need that one.
Don't move too fast. All right. We will convene the meeting of the redevelopment successor agency.
Director Mike Restush, Dean Uker, Daniel DeGraff, Vice Chairman Jake Parks, Chairman Leo Zier.
Present. Public discussion. Anybody want to say something before you leave the room? Apparently not. Moving on. We need approval of the minutes. Did you get that? Did you get that?
I moved.
Jake.
Okay, and I got one.
You got, yeah, you, yeah, you. Hang in there, we'll get you on. All right, all those in favor. All those in favor. Minutes approve consent calendar. Mr. DeGraff throws, five seconds. All those in favor. All those opposed, motion carries. Adjourn.
5:30 in the ballot.
Yeah, I think here, 5:30. Make sure you bring a flashlight. Make sure you get the vehicle decorated. No kidding. No kidding.
It's cold. It's cold.
Hey now, make sure you pay attention to.
I paid attention.
Here, here.
I can just have a pair of the meow.